All the January sixteenth meeting of the Person County Commissioners to order this time, recognize that we do have a quorum for our invocation today. We've asked Reverend Cleve Brandon with the Person County Ministerial Alliance to come and lead us in our invocation, after which Commissioner Sims will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let us all please stand. Precious Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come right now to say thank you. God, thank you for waking us up this morning. God, thank you for allowing us to see another day. And God, we want to thank you because you've been so good and so kind to... Now, God, we thank you for this commissioners meeting, God. We ask you to bless the chairman and all the members, God. And God, we just ask you to let everything be done in decency and in order. God, we thank you for our county commissioners, God. We ask you to bless them as they go day by day, God, as they make decisions and do things for us. God, we thank you for their service. And God, we thank you for being God, and besides, there are no other. God, thank you for allowing us to come together today. God, we thank you as we just celebrated the Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. God, we thank you for him, and we thank you for what he stood for. And God, we thank you for each one of us right now. God, we ask you to bless us as a county, God. Bless us as a city, God. And God, have your way, God, and draw us closer together. Let us come together in love, peace, harmony, and unity. God, we ask you to unify us the more. Now, God, we thank you for all things, God. We just thank you. We praise you. We bless your name. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you would, slip the flag and recite for me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is discussion, adjustment, approval of the agenda as presented, with the addition of a closed session number four.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of closed session number four.
Motion on the floor, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. Item number one on our agenda is a public hearing and presentation by Chris Bowley. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Morning, morning, morning.
Chris Bowley, Planning Department. Organized up here. Okay. And hopefully, we have a PowerPoint presentation nearby. There you go. Okay. So before you today is Special Use Permit Application zero five twenty-three. It's a two-acre site along the south side of Skylark Drive, which is generally located at the southwest corner of Samora Road and Skylark Drive intersection. It's adjacent to the east of North Carolina Marine Facility, provides secure boat storage near Heiko Lake and economic development for the area, which is in keeping with the comprehensive plan, follows the planning ordinance criteria for location in a B-two zoning district, and is compatible to existing adjacent land uses in the area. There's a general map showing the location, and the existing North Carolina or NC Marine site is located at the corner of the intersection. Here's an aerial photo showing the site is vacant and cleared, and along the left-hand side is an easement fifteen feet wide which provides access to this tract, which also has frontage on Samora, but there is a fifteen-foot existing recorded easement right there. And this is the comprehensive plan showing the Heiko Lake future land use designation and the B-two zoning district, neighborhood shopping. And this is a site plan which is required to be reviewed in Section eighty-one of our planning ordinance, as well as Section one fifty-five for special use permits. You can see it's a pretty detailed site plan. It shows the fifteen-foot wide easement along the west... I had it east along really the south side here. It's kind of southwest. This is the NC Marine site. This is an internal driveway that they're proposing to install with boat storage here, with a chain link fence secured here, and the little ice machine, which would be a retail component, will be moved over to this lot. Access will be along Skylark Drive. Access to the property to the south would be provided through the fifteen-foot wide easement through two gates here and here. And this property would be separate and detached from the NC Marine facility, even other same ownership. So here is the findings of fact, which are in our planning ordinance, and basically, this use meets those four findings of fact, that the use will not materially endanger, materially endanger the public health, safety, if located, were proposed and developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, as provided on the site plan. There are no materials or operations being proposed that will materially endanger public health or safety upon development, that the use meets all required conditions and specifications of proposed use, meets all of the requirements of the county, and shall meet the proposed conditions of approval for this SUP application prior to zoning permit issuance, that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties, or that the use is a public necessity. The proposed open storage use is typically a low intensity passive use. However, as a passive use, frequent property maintenance is needed for daily upkeep and to ensure that the subject property does not negatively impact area property values. The proposed conditions of approval shall be provided in the written order for property management. That the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. Proposed open storage use will be within an existing commercial zoning district of E-two. Proposed use is ancillary and supportive to the existing NC Marine business located directly adjacent to the subject property, as well as consistent with the comprehensive plan. Based on the above, the Planning and Zoning Department staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve SUP zero five twenty-three for the Patrick Property Management LLC Open Storage Lot with the following conditions: That the applicant attains all required permits from Person County Environmental Health Department, Planning and Zoning Department, Inspection Department, as well as required permits from any other agency to achieve construction, operations, and maintenance of the subject property. That the subject property shall not be used for retail use, and that the proposed ice machine is removed from the site plan for written order approval. That the approval for SUP oh five twenty-three only applies to subject property located Tax Map Number eight three one fifty-eight with parcel identification number nine nine five nine zero zero nine six oh seven nine one point zero zero zero, and not expand onto adjacent properties with Tax Map Numbers A three one fifty-three and A three one fifty-nine without following Section one five five dash four of the planning ordinance. The applicant or tenant shall not park or store vehicles within public rights of way and maintain rights of way due to use of the subject property. That the applicant or tenant shall provide unrestricted access in perpetuity to the property directly to the south at Tax Map Number eight three one thirty, and parcel identification number nine nine six nine dash zero 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 five five four eight eight point zero 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 through the existing fifteen-foot wide access easement. And the applicant or tenant shall provide conditional continual property maintenance that does not impact adjacent properties, to include maintenance of the perimeter security fence, electric gates, security keypads, fire safety access, and directionally downward security lighting. So with that, we ask for your support. The staff.
Question? Chairman, about? All right, well, procedural.
This swearing in?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, swearing in.
I thought about that during the presentation, so...
I didn't want to interrupt you, Mr. Plank.
Yeah. Should we do it now?
I think you can do it now.
Okay.
I think it's fine. And Madam Clerk, do you usually administer the air?
I can.
Okay.
And the applicant?
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
We'll have to come up and... You also have to attest that you approve of this application as part of the SUP.
Yeah, I realize you did so much work.
Yeah, that's right. And we have a Bible. We both have to swear on the Bible. And the clerk has to get up, and we have to raise our right hand.
Okay. So we are doing this a little on the fly, and I apologize.
Sure.
Mr. Plank Director and Sir, but if you all would just raise your right hand, please, and hand on the... Put down the Bible and swear affirm that the testimony you have given or will give is the truth to the best of your knowledge.
I do.
That'll do. Thank you.
And does the applicant need to make a statement that he supports this application? We typically do that.
Yes, sir, I would. Just for the audience, I'm still learning our process in Person County, so please forgive me if I'm interrupting the flow, but that's correct. He needs to accept the conditions that have been proposed.
Correct. Yes, I accept everything. He told me upfront about the ice machine, which I had no clue of, so I told him that is completely fine. It was kind of something I put in there just in case I decided to grow to. Wasn't anything for right now. I was trying to put as much stuff in there so we wouldn't have to do this process multiple times.
And they could just move next door to the existing lot for the NC Marine, so it's not a...
Just trying to keep... This is kind of going to be like a separate business. I'm trying to keep, even though I own all the lots around there, I kind of want to keep stuff separately.
Only a question for my clarity. In your statement, though, you talked about open storage.
It is.
Now, that is different than what I would call a salvage yard.
Oh, this is not a salvage yard.
Hundred percent.
So we're clear on that?
Yes, sir. This would be well maintained. That's why there's some conditions of approval for maintenance as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Boat storage only?
Boat and RV.
RV.
Yes, sir. There won't be... I'm not going to allow customers to like come in and work on their own stuff. It's not going to be a car facility. It's literally boat and RV storage.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it? We're all clear?
If you have any questions for staff, I mean, we can answer these.
I don't have any. We're all clear. If not, then we need a motion to open a public hearing. So move. Motion to open public hearing. All in favor say aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried. And Madam Clerk, do we have comments in favor or opposition?
Mr. Speaker, there's no individuals signed up in favor of or in opposition to the special hearing permit for Special Use Permit zero five dash two three.
So no one's signed up, so item number two would be consideration to grant or deny the request as presented. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion to approve. Have a motion to approve the request as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. Okay. Do we have a motion now to close the public hearing? So move. Motion to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. So we're all... You're all clear with that?
Thank you.
At this time in our board meetings, we have a ten-minute period set aside for public comment. And Madam Clerk, do we have speakers signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have four individuals.
Okay.
The first one is Don Norinski. And can we have a time limit, please?
What did you... Oh, two minutes. Two minutes, good.
All right. Can we have IT set the time limit for two minutes?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
At the conclusion of the last board meeting, rather than apologizing for his previous immature lack of civility and disrespect to the public, behavior that was specifically called out in print by the editor of the Roxware paper, a commissioner instead uses time to make the false and ludicrous claim that the three hundred and fifty-plus citizens attending the December fourth rezoning hearing were not from Person County, even though the vast majority of the thirty-six people who spoke that night clearly identified themselves to him as resident Personians. And this is further documented, of course, on the speaker's sign-up sheet. This commissioner then further defamed these county residents by alleging that they were paid to be there, accusing them of the crime of posing as county residents being paid somehow to subvert and defraud the hearing without a shred of evidence to prove this claim because, of course, none exists. This is a common tactic employed by dishonest public officials the world over to try and discredit their citizens from legitimately questioning their actions to deflect and provide cover for corrupt decisions. It's unfortunate that this board has brought such a practice to Person County. In addition, this is a clear case of what's called legally slander per se, according to North Carolina law, as Mr. Morpheus surely knows. As this commissioner had no proof, knew full well no such proof exists, yet he disseminated this lie out to the public at that meeting, including anyone viewing on the Internet. It's also called bearing false witness against your neighbor. That's biblical law, Deuteronomy five twenty. I attended and spoke at that December fourth public hearing. My name is Don Norinski. Here's my driver's license, Mr. Palmer, showing my Person County address for the past twenty years. Now you showing me your proof that I was paid to speak, and by who? And how much did I get?
I can't comment.
You don't have it, do you?
I can't comment.
No, you don't have it because it doesn't exist.
I could comment at the end of the meeting. And sir, may I remind you, you're speaking to the entire board.
Okay, well, the entire board should be... No, this... Commissioners, I am a seventy-eight-year-old man of the utmost integrity, who has fought for and participated in democracy and the rights of citizens my entire adult life. So I'm here this morning to give you back your negative nasty slander. It's all yours. I don't accept it, nor will it ever intimidate me or any of those fine Person County citizens who attended that hearing on December fourth, citizens who will continue to fight against the Mariah LNG toxic disaster. And finally, Mr. Palmer, you have demonstrated by your actions that evening that you're totally unfit for public office. You should either resign today or be removed by the board.
Out of order, please be seated.
If you won't, the voters will. Count on it.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Andrea Childers.
I would like to take my time to address the fact that it was mentioned at the last board meeting that residents who attended the December fourth commissioner meeting were called by a member of this board not civil. I believe what you were seeing that night was frustration, not uncivil behavior. The frustration grew out of the fact that this board showed much disrespect to their own constituents since the announcement in late August of the Mariah Energy Center. Disrespect by not including them in the planning of MECC. Instead, this board and the Board of Economic Development had clandestine meetings behind closed doors with Dominion Energy. Who knows? Maybe if you had actually included residents of this area in the planning, you might have gotten better buy-in. Disrespect by rarely responding to emails sent to you by your constituents. Disrespect by not answering the two, not even one answer to the two hundred and sixty-plus questions that were presented to you by residents of this county on November sixth and again on December fourth. Disrespect by not even pretending to take one minute to consider the very well-thought-out points that over thirty people, thirty residents made, including farmers, a doctor, a lawyer or lawyers, insurance agent, real estate agents, chemists, biologists, environmentalists, engineers, teachers, homemakers, and a tenth generation Personian. When taking into consideration all of the disrespect we endured by this board, I believe we behaved quite civil. If you feel that you were treated uncivilly, perhaps it was your constituents mirroring your own behavior. I would like to ask you to reverse the rezoning of the southeast Person County area that you rezoned on December fourth.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Frank Stoltman.
Well, that's ugly. Good morning.
Good morning.
Approximately fourteen months ago, I stood before you downstairs in the other hall and asked you to help us to establish some sort of process that we could develop Mayo Lake. At that time, you kicked it over to the county manager. I followed up with the county manager last summer. Nothing's been done. I am concerned that you people have the ability to do this in a very simple fashion. The North Carolina Utilities Commission has told Duke Power that they have to do whatever they can to replace the economic impact of closing plants or minimizing the plants to the community. You have two such plants, the only ones in North Carolina. You've done absolutely nothing to try to get that economic impact reduced. You hired a lobbyist firm to look out for Person County interests. That lobbyist firm has done nothing to try to develop Mayo Lake. So I'm here in front of you today, unfortunately, to call you out on it. I'm disappointed. I'm the owner of three businesses in Person County. I employ over twenty-four people on a regular basis, and I have over a hundred people that come in on contract work. In the fourteen months that you have passed on this, you have let one point five million dollars in tax revenue go by the wayside. You have spent more time working on your budget, which is an embarrassment, than you have on developing anything for this county. If you want this county to grow and grow properly and be stewards of the county, then don't herald the fact that Duke Power is going to minimize the plants. Do something productive for the county. That's what you were elected for. You're five Republicans. It's about time you started doing the right things. And I'm sick and tired of having to carry the financial burden of the taxes in this county because you won't grow the county. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker we have is Holly Ann Rogers.
I am a Person County citizen. I own property here beyond my residence, which is four oh five Younger Road. I had some other things I was going to say, but I just heard Mr. Norinski, he is the fourth, that is the fourth time since I have been involved in, in watching you folks operate, that that man right there has been asked to resign by Person County citizens. When he callously shot an eleven-year-old dog in the street and he sneered at a woman.
You're addressing the entire board?
I am. I'm, I'm addressing you. I want you to kick him out.
You addressed him. He's elected by the citizens.
I did not address him. I am addressing you all.
All right.
Asking that you remove him. Four different times, for four different reasons. He has been asked to resign from this board, and you've ignored it. You've not even discussed it. Also, um, I feel you all owe Person County citizens an apology for your callousness, for your heartlessness, at their disappointment, their fear. You're looking, they're looking at their livelihoods, their dreams going down in smoke. Yes, I see you watching the, the twenty-five seconds. Bless your heart.
No, I'm not.
Um, you disrespect your citizens over and over again. One final thing, Mr. Morpheus, I believe, according to the open meetings law, which I have given to Commissioner Perrier in the past, I believe that you are required to say why you were going into the final, uh, closed session that y'all decided to, uh, to add. I believe that that is part of the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, and I would appreciate you addressing that.
And I can tell you it's for attorney-client privilege, ma'am.
That's fine.
Okay.
As long as it gets said by the law. Thank you.
That concludes our informal comments.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is discussion, adjustment, and approval of the consent agenda.
For approval?
A motion on the floor, any further discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number four is new business, a presentation by Manager Kathy.
At your January second, twenty twenty-four meeting, you held a public hearing on whether the board should adopt a resolution to change the organization and governance of some of the county's human services functions. Following the public hearing, you directed, um, me to prepare a resolution to be approved at today's meeting, which would incorporate several actions, and those are as follows. This would be effective April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, which is ninety days from today. There is a board meeting scheduled that day. You have a regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting that day. So as of that day, if approved, um, this resolution would abolish the existing, uh, Person County Board of Social Services with thanks to the existing board members, create a consolidated human services agency, and this would be consisting of Departments of Social Services and Veteran Services, and consolidate those human services functions into one department, create a consolidated human services board, and the Board of Commissioners would assume the powers, responsibilities, and duties of the consolidated human services board, um, direct the county manager to appoint, with the advice and consent of the Board of Commissioners, a consolidated human services director to be supervised by the county manager, and then withdraw all affected employees of the consolidated human services agency from the State Human Resources Act and place them under county personnel policies. So that resolution is included in your agenda packet, um, for your consideration this morning. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Board member questions regarding the resolution? You're none, then we have a motion to approve the resolution as, uh, as presented to create a consolidated human services agency.
Motion to approve. Chairman Powell?
Motion to approve the resolution as presented. Any further comments or questions? You're none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number five, Manager Kathy, once again, addition of veteran services officer position.
And this is direction that the board also provided at the January second meeting. So, uh, considering moving the part-time veteran services officer into a newly established full-time position, so this would add approximately seventeen point five hours worked per week, as well as employee benefits for the veteran services officer. So for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-four, this would be approximately eleven thousand seven hundred three dollars, um, in additional budget needed to fund this change, and this is with an effective date of January twenty-second, or sorry, January twenty-sixth, which is a Friday, and it is the beginning of the next full pay period. So we have identified funding in the undesignated contingency line item that could cover this additional expense. So the recommended action is to approve the addition of one full-time equivalent or FTE veteran services officer position and eliminate the part-time position effective January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Use the remaining part-time salary and the undesignated contingency to fund the full-time position through the remainder of this fiscal year.
Board member questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a question on, um, have we identified the office for, uh, the Veterans Administration? We were, that has been discussed, and I didn't know if we've identified that office. We're adding a new employee, a full-time employee. I'm just thinking of space and when we, when they will be able to move in.
Right, so we did have a meeting set up last week to discuss, and it did get rescheduled due to the weather, so that will be this afternoon, and staff will be meeting with representatives from Freedom House to discuss, uh, their space needs and where we have the opportunity to expand into that space.
I, I just think we need to move on that and not drag our feet. Thank you.
Other questions? You're none. Do we have a motion related to the creation of the veteran services officer position?
Chairman Powell, motion made on the floor to put on a new employee for our veteran services.
We have a motion on the floor. Uh, further discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, for Chairman's report, just maybe a couple of things. I did attend the Martin Luther King, um, breakfast celebration just, yesterday morning, and a very good event, well-attended. Among other meetings, um, we had a productive airport commission meeting, uh, last week, and, uh, some updates on what's going on with runway and the runway extension. The environmental assessment there continues, and, um, I think the next steps there primarily are state-related, so we're waiting on that. And, uh, the taxiway rehab is possibly going to occur April, May of this spring, again, depending on weather and a few other things, but, uh, would, uh, require about a thirty-five day shutdown of the airport at that time. Also discussed, and discussed the possibility of constructing a new terminal there at the airport, so that's all in the long-range planning, so that was, um, those were just discussion points. And, um... Mr. Stoltzmann, I am in my comment period. Is he still here? You're still here, okay. I think this, this board and this manager has pretty much done what they could with the Mayo, and we had a promise there, correct me, manager, of some sort of report from them in August of twenty-three.
The last update we had is they were working with some of the private residences to resolve some issues before they could move forward with considering this further, so.
So our hands are tied there. We, we can't do anything, but it's not because you aren't trying. And also, there, there are several entities in that. It's not only Duke. We have many, many more, and you're in the environmental realm of this world, and you know what I'm talking about. So anyway, um, with the restraints that we have, I think we, we are doing something, and we will continue to do something, whatever that something is, I don't know. Whenever it's appropriate and when we can, we'll, we'll proceed. So we see the value. There's no opposition to it whatsoever, totally in favor of it. So we'll continue to do that. Manager Kathy?
I attended a strategic planning, uh, training session offered by the school of government last week, and it reinforced, uh, quite a few of the things that we've done in our strategic planning process and offered some additional, um, context and, uh, things to consider as we move forward. So we are in the process, over the next couple of weeks, of getting that, um, drafted for the board's review at your next meeting in February and hopefully adopt that strategic plan for moving forward. And then I also want to remind you that we will have our budget retreat at the second meeting in February, so please plan to hold that morning for the budget retreat.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, it's, uh, just a, I guess a couple of comments here I want to make is that, um, one commissioner doesn't represent this whole board. And so when people make accusations and say the whole board, if you've got an issue with that county commissioner, whoever it may be, you know, that's them. It doesn't mean it's us, it don't mean it's everyone here, and doesn't mean we all agree with whatever that issue is. So I want to make that clear when people get up and want to group us all together. We are a group, we are a county commissioner board, we're also individuals as well. The other thing is with the Mayo Lake development, and I've been in support with that, pursuing that, and again, uh, if our hands are tied, so to speak, uh, we need to dig a little deeper and figure out, uh, where we're at with that, where we're expecting report. I think we, uh, owe that to our citizens to say, okay, this is the situation we're in. And then, um, you know, after that, let's pursue whatever avenue we need to pursue to get this ball rolling with the Mayo Lake, if it's, unless we get blocked some other way, but I think we should pursue that and continue pushing forward that. It is a, uh, economic, um, issue, and certainly will add, um, to our economic, uh, budget and things here for the county. It makes a difference for our revenue, and it is important, and, uh, I think, again, we need to, we need to pursue it, and, uh, you know, will it be as big as HEICO as far as all the housing? Don't know, but certainly there's some lots there that people can, uh, build on and have, uh, boat ramps and what have you, if all that is approved and approved by Corps of Engineers. So I do think we need to pursue that, so. Appreciate everyone coming out with your comments. Just reiterate what Commissioner Powell said, uh, I don't mind you coming up and talking to us and blasting us for whatever is, uh, upset you and you disagree with us, but when you're up here, again, it's not individual. You don't call out an individual here while we're having our meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Sim, I'm Palmer, I'm sorry.
I've been very deep thought, but I have zero comments.
Commissioner Perrier?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to follow up. We did have a library board meeting at the B, uh, last week, and, um, it was addressed that there may, there are some spacing needs at the library because some collections are not accessible to, uh, residents as other collections are. So, um, the director's going to be working with the assistant manager. I believe the timeline for the CIP has already lapsed, but hopefully we can get it in into this, in the, um, possible, um, expansion to be included in this year's CIP, and so I just want to bring that to the board's attention.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
No report.
No report, okay. Next on the agenda then would be a closed session number one, closed session, per general statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A six. And those permitted to attend would be Manager Kathy, Clerk Solomon, Attorney T.C. Morse, Person County Sheriff Wilbert. Have a motion to, uh, go into closed session.
So move.
Motion to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Thank you.